Well Filipino-American media celebrities are paving the way for themselves and many in their community. That's what the Filipino-American Game Changers event was all about.
This YouTube celebrity with his 11,000 fans and followers was just one of several special guests at the Filipino-American Game Changers event. A.J. Raphael and the other panelists are all young millennials paving the way for Filipino-Americans in the media and entertainment industries. A.J. sings and plays piano, but he remembers the early days when he had zero fans on YouTube.
We just kept it going and we knew that there was this audience, especially Filipinos and Asian-Americans general, who never really saw people like them representing in this way.
It's so inspirational to see an American Filipino really representing our culture.
The Filipino-American Game Changers event was the brainchild of the Board of Public Works and Councilmember Gil Sadio's office.
These young leaders, the game changers in media, they are critical to reaching out to the youth who historically haven't been reached out to.
P.J. Buta, a K-day radio host and DJ, was one of the first Filipino-American radio personalities.
For me, it was just that love for music and I couldn't play an instrument like A.J. does, but I picked up another instrument called the turntable.
And Ricky Nirva always loved cartoons and animation.
So I was at Pixar for 20 years and I decided now my next chapter is I actually left and I'm starting my own company.
Meanwhile, Gisele Tanji, an actress, TV host, and producer, has also found her life's work.
I discovered that I wanted to dedicate my professional life to creating content for Filipino-Americans because there's nothing for us that speaks about our experience.
Filipino-Americans have more of a place in U.S. history than most Americans realize. For example, Filipinos settled in California in 1587. That's before Jamestown was founded. That's before the pilgrims came over on the Mayflower.
They were slaves basically on Spanish galleons.
And some of them stayed here, landed here?
And some of them landed here. In Morro Bay, the first landing, they were also in Louisiana.
And now organizers say Filipino-Americans are ready to take their place not only in history but in the future and change the game for themselves.
So game changing is for everybody to consider, to take their lives and to do something with it. Change their own game, make sure their voice is heard.
Marzen Abala is ready to be a game changer, Filipino or not. Wait till you hear what he wants to do. Marzen Abala's audience here seems to think the game changing has begun.
And as you just saw, the event included a reception afterwards. The downtown L.A. Public Library is marking 25 candles on a very special birthday cake, a cake that symbolizes rebirth after devastating fire shut it down. Ana Marcos has more on what the library means to the community.
The airy spaces and grand skylights help make the L.A. Public Library Central Branch sparkle at its special party, the 25th anniversary of its grand reopening. But it was a different story back in 1986 when the library was ravaged by not one but two arson fires. When it was all over, one-fifth of its books were gone with millions in losses.
There were many who felt that the building had outlived its usefulness, that it was not suitable for the 20th century library.
But the tragedy inspired an entire community. 1,500 volunteers and staff helped rebuild, raising millions through a Save the Books campaign. The city contributed $150 million of its own funds to the recovery effort and over 700,000 books were saved from burnt-out shelves. The branch was expanded, rehabbed, and renovated. Finally, in 1993, the Central Library reopened its doors.
I was given the opportunity to do these chandeliers. They have three themes. One is based on technology. The one directly behind me is nature and the center, and the last one is spirituality.
This is my first time with here with my boyfriends. This is like a really like nice place to like go for dates.
It's great. I mean, look at it. It's a huge place and it has expanded a lot.
And on this anniversary, a chance to honor 25 years of renewed book reading, learning, and education. Art, language, and writing workshops helped round out the fun activities. Even firefighters came to the party.
So 25 years later, we just wanted to have a big party and invite everybody to come join us and help us celebrate.
Who knows? Maybe 25 years from now, they'll do it all over again.
The major damage to the building was in the east wing. Today, this wing has been renamed after former mayor Tom Bradley, who was a pivotal force in the Save the Books campaign. Who's the master of the grill? L.A. City firefighters are among the competitors to crown this year's king, or rather, queen of barbecue.
It is time to fire it up for a barbecue grilling competition between L.A. City firefighters, Department of Transportation personnel, and the community. Competitors putting their culinary reputations at stake at the third annual Fire It Up BBQ Contest in Eagle Rock.
We really appreciate y'all and anything we could do to give back, any kind of way. We love the way you guys give back and we really appreciate y'all.
The event raises proceeds going to the Fire Family Foundation as well as the African-American Firefighter Museum down on Central Avenue near the Coca-Cola Company.
Congratulations to this year's grand champion Kathy Gilbert, the newcomer and L.A. City firefighter, smoked the competition with her tri-tip and ribs. Organizers want to thank all the competitors who made the event possible.
To all the fire department, bless you guys, bless your family, bless what you do, and God bless America.
Who looks good. First prize was $500, second prize was $200 bucks. Not a bad payday for having fun. Well, from barbecue to one of my other favorites, Greek food. Roasted meats and tzatziki were just some of the good eats at the L.A. Greek Fest as hundreds came out to savor the flavors.
You didn't have to be Greek to dance like Zorba at this 20-year tradition in L.A.'s Mid-City. The L.A. Greek Fest invited everyone to come out. This was Sahar Sabri's first time.
I love the Greek music. I love Greek food. I came from Egypt when I was one, but I've always loved, you know, the Greek atmosphere.
L.A. Greek Fest took place as it always does at Pico and Normandy. The three-day festival raised money for Saint Sophia Cathedral, one of the most beautiful and well-known Greek Orthodox cathedrals anywhere. Its dean, Father John Bacchus, says the celebration is a time to say "Opa."
Opa is like in Spain, they would say "ole." It's really an exclamation of joy. Like our Jewish friends would say "L'Heim," to life. That's what it is. It's to life. And we need to celebrate life because our days are numbered.
This area is also known as the Byzantine Latino Quarter, where Greek, Mexican, Korean, and Central American communities co-mingle and savor all the flavors at Greek Fest.
My first time here and I can't believe I missed it all these years, you know? But I'll try to come every year after this.
Movie star couple Tom Hanks and Rita Wilson hosted the event. Rita is a proud Greek-American and Tom Hanks joined the Greek Orthodox Church when the couple got married. And over in Chatsworth, folks stepped back in time to experience what life was really like for the early pioneers.
Well, today we have the Pioneer Day and earlier in the year, we have the Garden Festival.
The best thing I saw was dresses and all the charms and really these talented people.
We have events such as butter making and churning. We have somebody that's making nails and things like this, full-blown blacksmithing. We have a lot of events also for the kids. It goes back to the 19th century and what would have transpired here back in those days. We try to pride on preservation of things that pertains to the city of Chatsworth. Chatsworth has been a part of the city of L.A. going back to 1888.
By establishing a community here, the pioneers opened it up for other people to appreciate it like we do today.
I think the highlight today is definitely the family fun.
This was the 28th Annual Pioneer Day put on by the Chatsworth Historical Society. On Skid Row, art therapy is alive and well. Here's more on how the Midnight Mission's Art with a Mission workshops help residents unleash their creative side.
Mary Odom's Ward is working on her favorite kind of art, an original creation she likes to call angel flowers.
I draw flowers because my adoptive mom would have me to pick flowers. She would call me her flower girl.
This is the Midnight Mission's Art with a Mission workshop. Every second Thursday, Skid Row residents come in for a little artistic R&amp;R. Most of them draw, some don't. All are welcome.
Some people simply just want to color in a coloring book. Some people end up asking for a canvas and maybe some paints. We here believe that art and music is to the soul as food is to the body. When you're out in the streets, you're dealing with day-to-day life right there outside on the streets. And so something like this to get yourself out and just relax spiritually and get yourself to have a little fun.
The artwork ranges from the simple to the complex to art gallery quality. This guy says he's never really drawn much.
Something new to me. I ain't used to doing no drawing.
Some of these people are such regulars, they not only come every time, but they take their work with them so they can work on it during the month.
It doesn't matter if it's just two lines and a square. It's art, you know? And that's what makes it so cool. Anybody can do it.
Raphael Preciado had his artwork featured in a big way. It served as the Midnight Mission's banner for a recent citywide event.
It tells the story of the struggle that we have in all of our lives, those of us that are facing addiction. And as you can see in the tornado, there's marijuana, there's drugs, there's alcohol. And I've hurt my family, I've hurt girlfriends, I've been married twice, you know? And I can only imagine really what it's like for them to go through. You know, they really love me, you know? And I put them through a lot and forgive me. And it's just, you know, it's part of the story.
Preciado also helps others improve their artistic abilities.
He taught me how to draw an eye that's all based on circles.
Whether it's circles or lines or full-fledged drawings, a little inspiration through art and a little hope is born.
The Midnight Mission also has Music with a Mission workshops and Laughter with a Mission events as well, hosted by well-known stand-up comedians. Come out and support our veterans. Check out some funky artwork at Artists and Fleas. And a pop-up exhibit at the Autry explores the rituals of grief and loss. All this and this week's Things to Do. Honor our veterans during a celebration at Cypress Park Veterans Memorial. Join community members to salute local veterans, living and deceased, who have served our country in all branches of the military. The Cypress Park Veterans Memorial is a product of volunteer work organized by the Friends of Cypress Park in 2002, funded by a Los Angeles Neighborhood Matching Funds Grant. Veterans and Memorial Day observances became a regular feature in 2003 after the volunteer group converted a blighted concrete traffic median at the center of the community into a neighborhood garden and memorial site with engraved bronze plaque honoring all local veterans from all services. The Veterans Day Observance takes place on Saturday, November 10 at 11:00 a.m. Veterans Memorial Park is located at 690 Cypress Avenue. Artists and Fleas L.A. is the vibrant artistic community of Venice at the Westminster Avenue Elementary School at the corner of Abbott Kinney and Westminster Avenue. Join the fun every Saturday for a fabulous Artists and Fleas-style lineup of art, design, food, and vintage merchants. The next one takes place Saturday, November 10 from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 1010 Abbott Kinney. Remembrance, the Faces and Places explores how we love and honor those who have left the world better than when they entered it. The rituals of death are different in each culture, but grief for lost loved ones is universal. This pop-up exhibition from the Arroyo Arts Collective asks local artists to explore a deepened understanding, Dia de las Muertas, and all rituals, historically and worldwide, associated with how we grieve, how we continue to love, and how we go on in the face of loss. 20 artists will create altars in the niche space along both sides of the building's famed portal tunnel. The exhibition and related programs take place until December 8 at the Autry's Historic Southwest Museum at Mount Washington Campus located at 234 Museum Drive. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. I'd like to ask everyone to take their seats. Welcome you to your City Hall, your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Kocorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First, order of business.
Approval of a minutes?
Englander moves, Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Martinez moves, Rue seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute, sir.
If I could ask everyone to please rise for our flag salute. Mr. O'Farrell, would you lead us today in our flag salute, please?
I would be honored, sir. Thank you. Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, given the upcoming civil council recess, would council like all items today to go forth with, sir?
Yes, please.
Items 1 through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue. Item 15G to November 13, 2018. As well as items 15A through H are budget and finance reports that are submitted without recommendation. Motions are required for 15A through H, and there is no action required on 15S. And that is all, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rue?
Oh, and also item 11 needs to be held, sir.
And, okay, we'll hold items 6 and 11. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Mr. Harris Dawson?
On item number 15E, I'm making a request that the lien be reduced to $1,983.81 per Department of Building and Safety request.
Okay, does he need a second? If so, I'm second on that. Okay, let's, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, I'd like to also confirm the lien on item 15B. Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes.
You would, I didn't hear the-
I would like to confirm the lien on item 15B.
You have that?
Uh, yes. 15B confirmed the lien.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll.
Oh, Mr. President, just for the record, sir, 14 is an item that was waived and public hearing was not held on that, and there are cards on that, sir.
Okay, so then let's hold that. And if it's, if it's okay with you and okay with the city attorney, I'd like to vote on the remaining items. So, if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Twelve eyes.
Items 16 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on items 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, sir.
Why don't we just hold, at this section, let's just hold all items and let's recheck what we have cards on. So let's move on to the, the next section.
Next are items 34 through, item 34 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would council like to hold that on the desk?
Okay, Mr. Kocorian, I want to defer to you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Item 34 is a settlement that was considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations, and unless members have questions or concerns, that can be done in open session.
All right, let's vote on that issue. I see no concerns. Let's open the roll, close-
Uh, Mr. President, for the record, in the case entitled Muslim Advocates versus City of Los Angeles, et al., there is a recommendation to expend $538,690.57 in settlement.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that brings us where?
That brings council to presentations, items called special or public comment.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you have items 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, you have all the way to 30, and then your one minute.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, code violations, number 15. Plenty of code violations here. Housing projects, $20 million here and there. But I'll cut to the chase. Today is election day.
Oh, you want your one minute? Let's give him his one minute.
Yeah, I want my one minute. Today is election day, and we're asking, where's the mayor? Where are you people? We need, I'm telling you right now, I was out today checking, there are long lines at the voting booths all over the city because the city is in revolt. The city wants some accountability, and it's getting no accountability. That's why we're asking for, for you to come with us and tour the site and see what's happening in the city. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, you have items 14, 18, 19, 21, 25, 28, 29, 31, 32, and your general public comment.
Thank, uh, thank you, sir. I'll start at the zero mark. Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and we do appreciate your putting together this agenda, and I just would say, as regarding the new rules for preferential parking districts, interesting choice to have it be all consolidated in council district approval as opposed to started by neighborhood councils or other organizations. Very, very interesting. We'll take a close look at that. It's a pity that it wasn't vetted properly. And as regard for the rental rates at the convention center, certainly Englanders should step aside since that's the AEG thing. You, you gave a discretionary $10 million-
Mr. President, on the items, identify.
Street banners are good, sir. Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council, certainly they're in the zone. They got a little street banner program. No, no information about how much we're spending on that one. We have a neighborhood council in my neighborhood, and we don't, we haven't gotten too much traction with the street banner program. We're trying to do a little more interesting kinds of outreach in our, in our region. One idea was during the upcoming neighborhood council elections, we're thinking about having the council member in our district e-blast out information about the people who are running because nobody knows. We're getting on to the point here, which is that 19 is, Mr. Sadio is today fortunately stepping in for Bonin. Where is Bonin? Has he been excused? I don't think-
On this topic.
Fair enough. But, well, it's a Bonin motion being provided by Sadio, who raised double or quadruple the amount that Bonin raised during the campaign finance for their various elections. Sir, when we have excess bonds from the CRLA, we obviously do want to kind of push it out the door. The question is, does Kocorian pushing it out to that big, giant conglomerate near the freeway, the right application of fixing up the roads? It's a lot of money. Now, there may be some necessary requirements there. We are under siege, as you know, with terms of traffic and congestion, so we're hoping that that works out well. And I noticed that today you have a little notice for the Waze people, that you're coming for them, sir, that none of this, trying to get through the traffic by alternate routes, we're going to shut that down. I'm not sure I agree with that. I think we have to work cooperatively.
So I don't think that's on the agenda.
Okay, get back on the agenda, Mr. Previn. Last time, I'm going to warn you.
I'm sorry. Well, let me just get through this stuff. 28 and 29 are obviously Englanders diligently trying to reapportion money for a swimming pool in a certain way that requires very careful concern. As I've said before, sir, when you have a lame duck, that means somebody who's really kind of termed out by his own humiliating desire to go be a lobbyist instead of serve his constituents. What happens there is you, you have to watch him very closely because he will push all sorts of money out the door, which is what he's doing, and we just need to watch all the catches on that. It's very important. 29, sir, as you recall, is the other item that caught my attention from Mr. Englander's section, which has to do with the rescinding of your motion to-
Thank you. Let's give him his one minute for general public.
Sure, I'll try to, I'll try to be quick. Mr. Coetz is a prodigious fundraiser and an excellent debater. It's what we've been told. People have come forward to say he's really a very, very good debater. He debated that guy Jesse Creed for CD5, and it was just a series of vanquishing outings by the man. So we've asked he and Bonin to step forward and come forward to the table right here, sir, and have a debate with the public about the campaign finance ordinance because why not, what a great way to sort of see if 80% of the challengers of the field getting zero and 20%, including Bonin and Coetz, getting the big dollars, is really the way we want it, especially in light of the independent expenditures that a guy like Coetz can, can pull down. He's got, I think he raised 488 plus 318 in independent expenditures, then took $100,000 extra from the public fund and had a little half a piece of cheesecake, sir. So that is a lot for one guy in CD5. He's got rich people all over the place. In CD2, where we're down in the bottom, nobody would think so because I come across so upscale, but we are in the bottom of bottom five districts, so we can't get that kind of people to give money.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Peirman, you have items 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and your general public comment.
Let's see, number 19, it shows multi-
18.
Oh, I didn't put it, oh, it says, skip 18. Okay, and then 19 and 20-
No, ma'am, 20.
Oh, well, same thing. 20 and 19 are basically the same thing where, oh, yeah, I couldn't, I tried to put it in the computer and it wouldn't go in, that's why. Something went wrong. So anyway, these are all multifamily revenue bonds, not to, this one is not to exceed $20,000 to finance development 54 housing unit, which is, of course, trying to fill it up with a lot of housing that most people can't afford. These are really not affordable housing. They give about 10% affordable housing and 90% for people who like rents for $4,000 a month. And I'm just going to go through them, say 21 is the same type of thing, $10,000 financing, financing capital improvement for an early childhood center. That's too much money. A childhood center is nice, but $10,000, certainly you can come up with something a little cheaper than that. Then we got 22, $8,000 for expositions for somewhere in District 8 for rehabilitation improvement equipment, a multifamily rental housing project, again, another one of those type of things where they just fill it up so that they probably won't stay there long, but they don't care if they stay there or live there, just look so they can say they were there and we get credit for it. And number 23, another $12,000 for another 32-unit multifamily rental housing over in District 8. Hey, you seem to be having a lot over there in District 8. And another one for District 8, $12,000 for rehabilitation equipment of a 38 multifamily rental housing project. These are just too much. You just like to look good, so it looks like you're saying, well, look, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, and really you're not doing anything for the public at all. You're just putting up these huge places that will not be filled up. They will not stay because after a while they won't be able to afford it because you don't have a full plan on how to keep these people in the housing. And they won't stay. They'd rather go out there, have drugs, and go out, have the mental illness, and they don't even know how to stay. So this is just shows more pet projects for the city council. We're filled up with too many Democrats on the city council. We need to have more-
Keep it down, then. You don't have to yell.
Okay.
Okay, now give her one minute.
Okay, one minute. I just wanted to tell everybody, guess what? I can't believe it. The day, Los Angeles Daily News, the liberal paper, and myself believe some of the same things. I can't believe it. They're saying, John Cox for governor. Yay, way to go. And the propositions, it's just like, I called them and told them how to do it, but no, they did it themselves. So they, even the liberals know that the only good propositions are 5, 6, and 11. They said no on 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 10, and 12, and no on W, no on B, no on E, and no on EE. They're deceptive. They want to have lower voter turnout. That's why they want to have it in March. So remember, everybody, wherever you're at, if you're really concerned about your districts, you got to vote Republican. Find your Republican wherever they are on the ballot and vote. Be sure to vote, but I would love for you to vote Republican. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, you have 29, 30, and 31 in general public comment. Ryan Raza, come on. No, just come on, come on.
Good morning. Good morning, Los Angeles. Good morning, President, honorable council members. My name is Ryan Raza Farsai. I'm a Los Angelian. My long-time address is 2714 Portland Street. I am a beta theta pi from University of Southern California. I'm here to talk about number 29, 30, and 31. We have a problem here, ladies and gentlemen. The problem is, the people running this place just keep on spending our money without any authority. They want to forego various rules, previous, previous motions. Why is that? Why do they want to reverse everything? Huh, Mr. Englander? Why do you want to reverse everything, huh? England ER? Huh? Are you a Cali me like me? Are you Jewish? Are you Lebanese? Which one are you?
Stay on the-
I am on the topic, sir. Do not interrupt me anymore. I'm doing my best here. Every time you interrupt me, every time I come and talk- I'm doing my best here every time you interrupt me, every time I come and talk.
Now, look, you're going to stay on the topic or you're going to go sit down, all right? Now, speak on the items.
I was speaking on number twenty-nine. Now I'm going to speak on number thirty. Number thirty is asking for fifteen thousand dollars to be transferred. So what I don't understand is we keep on making decisions on parts of the city but not for the entire city. The same thing for number thirty-one. You're issuing ten million dollars in bonds, not to exceed ten million dollars. That's a lot of money, ladies and gentlemen. They don't need your authority. They're waiving the city of Los Angeles multifamily bond policy to allow this to happen. So there's rules in place, and they just want to supersede the rules. And they do it nice and legally. Right here, they smile in front of your face, and they just steal ten million dollars. And they're dedicating it to certain cities, mostly Van Nuys. Is that your district as well, Mister Englander? Which one is it? Who's Van Nuys? Are you Van Nuys? Chatsworth? Chief Winnetka? Is that what you are? So I'm trying to understand here what's happening in America. What's happening is the people in charge are putting us in debt continuously. They've been doing it for fifty years. We currently have twenty trillion dollars in debt. Every child born in America has three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in debt and counting. Does that sound reasonable to you, honorable council members? You think you're doing a good job with your twenty-seven point five million dollars of spending a day?
Get on the topic, Mr. Raza.
I'm on the topic. You have nine point billion dollars to spend. That's twenty-seven point five billion. You have to get the authority or follow the law. You're not following the law. You want to waive the city of Los Angeles multifamily bond policy.
Let's give him one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
General public, today is election day. I'm not voting. I sent my ballot to the Governor Brown with my cut-up DMV renewal. I sent my California driver's license, cut half of it, to the Department of Justice. I sent my ballot, cut up, to the Governor of Oregon as well. You see, there's a problem with our voting system, ladies and gentlemen. It's broken. Someone like me was able to get two ballots. I already let the people in the city of Huntington Beach know on May twenty-first. I let them know again last night. The voting system is broken. These people in charge are all my Hebrew brothers. They pretend to be Catholic or Christian or whatever they want to be. Maybe they're Muslim, too. But you know what they are? They're in control of your money and in control of your future. The problem is, we need to help our children. Every child born in America is born with three hundred and twenty-five thousand in debt. Are these people going to remove that debt? No, they have an intention of adding more debt. Let's help America. Let's help the middle class. Let's help our children.
Thank you.
Let's get these people out of office.
Mister Herman, you have items fourteen. You have, now you're disrupting. You have items fourteen, sixteen through thirty-three, and your general public.
Now that I have your full attention, now that I can stand before the American people in protest, in promoting better neighborhoods, and amplifying the quality of life in all communities except for you Jew, the Los Angeles Municipal Code Rule under sixty-two point one thirty-two.
Mister President, I can't tell which item.
I'm talking about the [BLEEP] banners you don't appreciate, motherfucker.
No, just keep your, keep your, your voice down. Stay on the subject. Your last warning. Go ahead, Mister Herman.
So as an event in promoting America, we make it great again.
What I, Mister Herman, you got to get on topic.
I'm on the last items of which public hearings have not been held, sir.
Mister Herman, do you want to go directly to your general public comment, or are you going to speak on the items that you signed up for?
I signed up on all items. Is something wrong with the kiosk?
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Why are we so abrasive all of a sudden? Why are we deterring the public's transparency to free speech and cursing what we should say and what we should feel in our emotions to say, fuck you, America. Let's make America great and for all and get out and vote in the demise of every candidate called by their right-wing name, meaning you, they, them, who forced us to live in poverty and homelessness, time after time, poverty pimps asking for more money. Show me the money. While Trump is back, Trump is here to stick his right foot right where it belongs, deep in your shit, trying to get out of this deficit that you've created and force our children to live in poverty.
Thank you, Mister Herman. Thank you. Your time's expired. Mister Herman, your time's expired. Okay, let's vote on item. Ms. Peirman, please sit down. You're disrupting the meeting. Okay, now we're going to vote on item fourteen. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on now to items sixteen through twenty. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll vote on items twenty-two through thirty-three. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now we'll vote on item twenty-one as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
Mister President, there is an amendment on fifteen C. That amendment has been posted and circulated and is now before council.
Okay, let's vote on it as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, that concludes multi-general public comment. Mister O'Farrell, are you ready with your presentation? Then the floor is yours.
Mister President, colleagues, good morning and welcome. This is officially transgender month in the city of Los Angeles, and we're very, very excited to celebrate the theme to vote, meaning today, vote. If you haven't done so, please vote, and the theme of we will not be erased. How about a big round of applause for the men and women surrounding me today?
Definitely, definitely.
We have worked tirelessly with the City of Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council and Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department to bring this event to you today, along with Human Relations Commission, to shine the spotlight on the T in LGBT. Please visit the City Hall Bridge Gallery and see some inspiring work from local artists Sam Hewitt, Danielle Paris, and Adam Morello Reyes. As Los Angeles heads to the polls today, and in light of additional ignorant and discriminatory policy directions from Donald Trump, it is fitting that we highlight Transgender Awareness Month and the work of our own Transgender Advisory Council to help advise this body on policy that will help better the lives of our transgender brothers and sisters. Since we last brought the TAC to council, we've been busy collaborating to ensure that the trans community in Los Angeles, as I said, will not be erased. We worked with the mayor's office, the LAPD, and APAIT to create a midnight stroll, conducting outreach to our homeless trans community in Hollywood and offering supportive services and emergency shelter. The program employs members of the trans community, and we will continue to work with APAIT to extend the contract for another term. Working with the TAC, the city council approved mandatory transgender sensitivity training for every city department. And colleagues, this is the first in the nation. No other city has done this. We are opening the first transgender bridge housing later this week at the YWCA in Hollywood and for the first time providing.
Congratulations.
Sixty-two beds. Thank you. Sixty-two beds to transgender women in the heart of Hollywood. My office has funded and supported organizations like Bienestar, Covenant House, and City Times One for their programs that touch the lives of the transgender community. We worked with our city controller, Ron Gallipari, to hold a professional clothing drive, which also helped members of the transgender community, and at the youth center on Highland Avenue. We supported efforts by Equality California to continue its leadership training program as well as work with a local hotel to establish a job training program for trans individuals. And sadly, that whole project was protested by someone who actually claimed that I was anti-LGBT, if you can believe it, but it did happen. But what we did was, we put that training program as part of the entitlement of that hotel. We included transgender and Two-Spirit Visibility at this year's inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day. In fact, the Two-Spirit community was a big part of Indigenous Peoples' Day, as it was always historically a big part of Native tribes across the country before first contact. We want to acknowledge the Transgender Advisory Council members. Joining us today, we have Karina Somala, who you'll hear from in a moment, the chair. Thank you, Karina. Jasmine Creighton, who heads our APAIT Midnight Stroll. Alexander Lucky Fuller, Tiana Herrera, Sofia Larios, Gia Ryan Elias. Maria Roman is not here. Sabell Simone Loreca. James Nguyen, I didn't see James, but maybe James is joining us later. We also have joining us today Assistant Chief of the LAPD, Bea Girmalla, and her team, who have been instrumental in collaborating with us on all things trans visibility and LGBT community. And having said that, what I'd like to do is have Chief Girmalla say a few words.
Chief, welcome.
Thank, thank you very much, Council President West, and it's a privilege to be here. I will keep my remarks brief. Our transgender brothers and sisters within the city of Los Angeles and throughout the nation still struggle on a daily basis with a world that has impacted them with violence and hatred. I'd like to take a moment right now of silence to remember the twenty-two members of the transgender community of the United States of America who lost their lives so far this year in crimes of violence. Only a few short miles from where we stand this morning, in January, actually, January tenth of 2018, Vicky Gutierrez lost her life in a murder arson in the Olympic area of this city. While our work has come a long way, and I have great, great love for the Transgender Advisory Council, the LGBTQ Working Group with LAPD, CD13's great work, the Midnight Stroll, APAIT, and others, we know there is much work to be done for especially transgender women of color. So as we remember today, our brothers and sisters who have gone to their rest, please know that we are committed, on behalf of the ten thousand men and women of the LAPD, to continue to support these efforts. Thank you.
Well said, Chief. Well said. Well said.
Thank you, Chief Girmalla. Today is so important for the transgender community as we raise awareness of the triumphs, the struggles, and the great love within the community, working to lift each other up and sometimes just fight to survive in an often hostile world. One trans woman working toward that effort is the Chair of the Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council, Karina Somala. I'd like to invite Karina up to say a few words at the DAS to share with us the importance of this day for the transgender community.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much for having us here. Council members, President, I'm Karina Somala, the Chair of the Transgender Advisory Council. First, I want to thank Council Member Mitch O'Farrell and his wonderful staff for all their efforts of bringing visibility to the transgender community through collaboration with the TAC, H-CED, and various departments and officials. I'd like to thank the entire city council for their exceptional leadership and for keeping your eyes on our community. I'd like to thank every member of the TAC who are here with me today and their vital commitment and dedication in advising the policies that addresses housing, healthcare, workforce development, and equity to our community. Today, we are here to further our goal of keeping the city's transgender community visible and safe. Transgender Awareness Month is a time for transgender people and their supporters to take action and assist in educating the public about transgender, what we face from day to day, prejudice, discrimination, and violence. I'd like to thank also all those people that are behind us, every member of the TAC, vital committed and dedicated in advising the policies of our community. And today, we are here to further our goal in keeping the city's transgender community visible and safe. The work created by the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department and the Transgender Advisory Council is leading the way to provide solutions for our transgender family. Here in Los Angeles, we have city officials who are fully supportive of our community and assist us in making sure that human and civil rights of all, of all our citizens are protected. And we also continue, we also continue to work diligently with LAPD, Chief Girmalla, who's all behind us, to make, ensure that violence towards the transgender community is taken seriously and there is immediate response to all hate crimes. Thank you for this wonderful council presentation celebrating Transgender Awareness Month and Happy Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karina. As has been made abundantly clear, today is election day. Our transgender brothers and sisters are under attack constantly by the man in the White House, and I think that it says everything about the character of an individual, when you occupy the most powerful office in the land and you scapegoat those with the least amount of power. And today is a chance to keep that power in check, and I am hoping for a big blue wave across the country, and I know I'm not alone in that notion. Donald J. Trump and his liaisons are drafting policy targeting our transgender community, potentially erasing years of hard-fought victories for our human rights. The proposal to narrowly define gender and roll back recognition and protections of transgendered people under federal civil rights law is hateful, hurtful, discriminatory, and harmful to our democracy, and it will be fought in court, and we will win again. This mean-spirited agenda has no place in the city of Los Angeles. We will fight to ensure our transgender community will not be erased. And we now have a very special treat that we'd like to show that should inspire all of us on this election day, and we have a video.
Hello, city of angels. Happy Transgender Awareness Month and Happy Election Day. I am Minneapolis Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins, the first African-American, openly transgender woman elected to public office in the United States of America. I am proud to bring you greetings from Minneapolis, with help to raise visibility of our transgender and gender nonforming community. Today's election is an important one. Since the beginning of 2018, ten states have introduced twenty-one anti-trans bills, and two states are considering anti-trans ballot initiatives, bills that override municipal and county-level discrimination laws. Our community is being singled out through these reprehensible and restrictive bills that target our health care, identity documents. that target our healthcare, identity documents, child welfare, student rights, and basic access to restrooms. I would like to encourage everyone to take time to vote today. Trans lives are depending on your support. Transgender individuals live below the poverty line at rates five times higher than that of the general population. I know in my heart that the trans community is ready to collaborate, roll up their sleeves, and get to work with organizations who support them. Inclusion not only builds diversity, but also hope, faith, and trust in our collective future for a better America. So here's to turning the house blue this election day, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of your special month recognizing transgender awareness. We will not be erased.
And colleagues, that was Andrea Jenkins, the Vice President of the City Council in Minneapolis, first transgender elected official of any city council in the United States. So congratulations to her. And the images that played while she was speaking are images that are in our third-floor Bridge Gallery right now that you can see on public display. In honor of Transgender Awareness Month, we'd like to present to Karina Somala and members of the TAC a resolution declaring November 2018 as Transgender Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, everyone. And remember, if you see this from your television screens before 8:00 PM, it's not too late to vote. Go vote. Sometimes our lives depend on it.
Yes, it does. Give him a round of applause. And Mr. O'Farrell, before you present, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Coretts.
Mr. President, and I just wanted-
Okay, Mr. Herman, I'm sorry. Sergeants, he was warned three times. Remove him from council. Remove him right now.
There will be a few moments of drama. Happens to every council member, and then we'll-
I mean, you disrespect other people. We set up, we listen to your garbage, and you're going to have to show respect for these people as well. Sergeants, I just get him out of here. He has disrupted this meeting several times today, and we've been meeting less than one hour. So let's have him removed. He's continuing, Mr. City Attorney, to disrupt this meeting.
He is, and just in case the mic-
Just, Mr. Herman, please leave.
He's shouting as he leaves so that we can't continue our business. His usual strategy.
Okay, I'm just sorry. This is too important of a moment, and I know Mr. Coretts has been waiting patiently to say some words. So, Mr. Coretts, the floor is yours.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. O'Farrell for bringing this forward and tell you how proud I am that you're championing this issue. I've been involved with the issue off and on since I first got involved in the city of West Hollywood 34 years ago, and West Hollywood, I think, has been a champion in support of transgender rights. But I think it's critical that a city of our size and our diversity be a champion as well, and appreciate everything that you're doing and this group is doing. One of the things I was the most proud of doing in the state legislature was authoring a ban on discrimination in healthcare against transgender individuals, which is in place to this day. And I think every step we take is critical, especially now when we're getting encouragement to discriminate at the federal level, which is absolutely outrageous, and that encouragement, I think, helps encourage folks to take violent action against people who are transgender, and we have to put a stop to that. And LA has to be one of the shining lights in support. So I am proud that you're doing this. I'm proud of everything that we're doing in support of the transgender community, and I know we will continue until things greatly improve.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. O'Farrell, back to you.
Chief, you want to help me present this?
Please, after you.
Francisco, take a bow for all the great work you've been doing.
Give Francisco a round of applause. Good man.
Francisco is there. He works hand in hand. He walks with us during the Midnight Stroll. He's an incredible presence in the effort to elevate the visibility of this community. So thank you, Francisco. Okay, and Sandra Cervantes as well. My apologies, Sandra.
Okay. Antonio Ramirez, please come forward. General public comment, one minute.
LAPD, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the LAPD, these hinchiladas, are pandering to the lesbians, queers, trannies, and fags. Incidentally, they are not the victims, but they are the racist hate mongers who want to sodomize children in America. Go to the Grand Park, the Music Center, Grand Park bathrooms, Block 1 and Block 4, and you'll see all the lesbians, fags, and trannies stampeding, bullying, and attacking heterosexual and heterosexual men and women. They hate heterosexual men and women. Having said that, now we have the niggers in Skid Row who have joined forces with the Olvidas, Placita, Chango, Latino wetbacks and gangbangers terrorizing women, men, and children, including our military veterans. Wait till the riots come. They're going to be a bloodbath and a massacre against the niggers, the gangbangers, the wetbacks, and the trannies and the lesbians, who are not victims. We are the victims. They are nothing more than a thing that they are above the law.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expired. Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Kocorian, item 11, I'm told.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just wanted to rise briefly on this item and thank Mr. Bonin and Mr. Coretts for working with this, and I know Mr. Ru has a very strong interest in this issue as well. And I just wanted to speak for a moment to what this motion is and what it is not, because there's been a lot of nonsense written about it, actually, in the public. We have a partnership with Waze and with Google Maps and with some of these other apps that involves sharing of data between the city and these applications. But we have gotten the short end of that deal. The city is not really benefiting from that partnership, in my view, while they are benefiting a great deal. And at the same time, these applications are causing havoc in many of our neighborhoods. Places where substandard streets without sidewalks, blind curves, low speed limits are being flooded with vehicles because of these applications, to the point that people can't get out of their driveway, to the point that kids who are forced to walk or ride their bike in the street because there's no sidewalk are endangered by distracted drivers looking at their phones, who are late for work, who are using these applications to speed through residential neighborhoods. So what this motion is intended to do is to instruct the Department of Transportation to develop a more positive partnership that includes suggestions for how we might address and mitigate the adverse impacts that are happening because of these applications. That will take into account what streets are adversely impacted and how we can mitigate that. Will take into account bicyclist and pedestrian safety on these streets. That will take into account emergency situations and special events. We've even had situations where the fire department has caused streets to be closed down to allow people to evacuate out, and because the streets are closed down, the apps show them as being cleared. So they're directing traffic into those very areas that we're trying to evacuate people out of. A better, more positive data-sharing partnership with the city would remedy many of those issues, and that's what this is about. So I again want to thank Mr. Coretts for seconding it and Mr. Bonin for seeing this through T Committee, and I respectfully ask for your eye vote.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let's prepare to vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there is an amendment for item number six. It's been posted and circulated for council consideration, sir.
Let's prepare to vote on that, item six as amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Special one, under Rule 23, has been posted and circulated. I will very briefly summarize the findings, as I understand them, made by the mover. The National Students for Justice in Palestine, the SJP, has come to the attention of the city, excuse me, that the SJP has scheduled a conference at UCLA for November 16 to 18. SJP's website falls under the State Department's recently adopted definition of antisemitism and may violate Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. The item has come to the attention of the city since the posting of the agenda, and because of the council recess, waiting until after the recess to regularly agendize this item may not provide enough time for the chancellors of the university to cancel or otherwise affect the conference, and there is thus an immediate need to act. So we should take three votes on this item. First, we should vote on the findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2. Take any public comment, if there is any, on the kiosk, and the vote on the substance of the motion.
Okay. Let's do the first vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very concerned about the National Students for Justice in Palestine, or SJP, and the conference that they are planning to host at UCLA. There have been a number of reports in the news media of antisemitic hate speech by their leadership, calling for violence against all Jews. There are tweets that have called for killing all Jews, slashing Jewish throats, Jews' throats, and stuffing Jews in the oven. As an alumni and the member that represents this area, I'm shocked and disappointed that the university would bring this forward. This organization and its leadership has already shown its violent tendencies. In May of this year, UCLA students supporting Israel had an event on campus, and the members of SJP forced their way into the meeting, screamed into bullhorns, destroyed property, and the university police had to come to prevent further violence. They also, at this conference, it is not open to all students. It is only open to students vouched for by SJP or other pro-Palestinian groups on campus. And so discriminatory choices like this can infringe on Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And although UCLA has a responsibility to allow freedom of speech, our campuses should never become an environment where students are bullied and harassed. UCLA has not responded to this so far, and so I am asking the council to approve this resolution, calling on UCLA to cancel this conference. And certainly, in light of what happened in Pittsburgh and the fact that we're trying to increase security at temples and religious schools, et cetera, of the Jewish faith, bringing in people that have made violent statements from all over the country into LA is hardly something that we think will encourage safety in this area. So I would like to ask for an eye vote on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Could we let Mr. Previn through, Sergeants?
Thank you, sir, and thank you to Mr. Coretts for taking a close look at this. One question is, because it's so fast and on the fly, I understand it's because it's an event, you're going to be on hiatus, but none of the optics have come into focus. Obviously, I think we all agree that hate is unacceptable, but I've been concerned across California about shutting down certain kinds of activities. I wonder if Luskin and Zevi Arslavski and those folks have any official statement from the university. There are a lot of open-minded people at UCLA, and I don't know, you know, it's very hard, because in this endless struggle between Israel and Palestine that has been painful for that country and for this country and for around the world, there's a lot of tumult and emotion. So I certainly stand with Coretts against any kind of hate speech, but I'm not clear what this motion is doing, and so I would just advise that we double-check, perhaps with the Muslim advocates who sued the city of LAPD today and got $538,000 in legal fees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh?
My grandmother was a Jew. She came to America, and she fell in love with a non-Jew. I'm telling you right now that we need, and where is Eric Garcetti? He also is a progeny of a Jewish, non-Jewish marriage, but we don't see him because he's been paid off. He's out doing something else. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. That ends comment on this item. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have additional votes? Or Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we should vote on the substance of the motion now.
Okay, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Coretts?
If I could ask that this go forth with?
All of the items will be going forth with. All right. That brings us where?
There is still 15A, D, F, and H.
Okay, well, let's vote on those items. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now, what's before this council?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members? Other than, let's remind all Angelinos that can vote to go out and vote. Any other announcements? If we could all rise? If we could all rise for adjourning motions? Okay, announcement, Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So three years ago, Mr. O'Farrell and I stood before the National League of Cities Board of Directors asking to- of Directors, asking to consider their support for sponsoring the National League of Cities City Summit here in Los Angeles, and it has arrived. It is here. It is the Olympics for Cities, the Super Bowl of Cities. I want to thank this body, Mayor Garcetti, for your support in making this happen. Here before us is General Manager of our Convention and Tourism Department, Don Lu. Mr. Price, we will be in your district this week, among other parts of our city. Tomorrow, multiple workshops highlighting our successes and best practices and some challenges that our cities face with nearly 4,000 municipal leaders that will be visiting us from around the country. And just want to thank this body for their support and looking forward to hosting these municipal leaders from all over the country here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I want to give a special recognition to Joe Buscayeno on, on bringing, not only bringing them here, because this was actually his idea, and logistically, it's a nightmare. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of politics, and it takes years. And he's, he's, he's worked hard to represent the city of Los Angeles and this whole region, and it's critically important in the nation, particularly now more than ever, to do that. And the relationships that he's building nationally with all the elected officials to put LA and keep LA on the map, where we've got a voice in Washington that's not lost because all the cities, the council members and the mayors really carry a lot of water. And it's been Joe, for the last several years, signing up and showing up, leaving his family, going on weekends, to all these meetings and seminars to make sure that we have a voice, and now he's brought them here. So, thank you, Joe.
Any other announcements? Okay, I'll look to my left for adjourning motions. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Much. Colleagues, I ask today that we adjourn in the memory of Ramona Ripson. She built the ACLU of Southern California into a civil liberties, civil rights, and activism over the course of four decades. I got to meet her almost three decades ago for the first time and, and have just followed her career like all of us have. You can't help it. She has shaped this city and this country. Haven't always agreed with her on everything, but man, has she changed the world. She served as the Executive Director of ACLU Southern California from the early seventies to just a few years ago. She was an impassioned, outspoken, ever-p persistent champion of civil rights and civil liberties, taking on issues including racial discrimination, police practices, the right of immigrants, women's rights, LGBTQ rights, educational equity. With an unflagging energy, she enlisted world-famous celebrities, grassroots organizers, and ordinary citizens alike to fight for these causes. Police spying on community activities, she was involved with that with coalition partners. The ACLU SoCal succeeded in 1984 in shutting down the LAPD's longstanding Public Disorder Intelligence Division that was regularly known for disregarding constitutional rights. She dealt with voting rights. The ACLU SoCal team with her at the helm teamed up with MALDEF, that's the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund, in 1981 to sue Los Angeles County for drawing voting districts that denied Latinos fair representation. The result was a majority Latino supervisory district that Gloria Melina represented for 23 years. Reproductive justice. She and ACLU SoCal fought numerous attempts to curb abortion rights, and they helped make California the first state to strike down a statute restricting funding for doctor-advised abortions. Driving while black or brown. In 1999, with her at the helm, ACLU SoCal launched a public service campaign to bring awareness to race-based stops by police. LGBTQ rights. She, with her at the helm, ACLU SoCal was the first ACLU affiliate to craft a policy on gay and lesbian rights, and the first organization in the U.S. to hire an attorney to work full-time on those issues. Ripson was a pioneer in proclaiming economic justice as a primary issue for ACLU SoCal. She launched landmark litigation that resulted in a nearly $1 billion commitment from the state of California to upgrade rundown schools in poor and minority communities. She was born 1927 in Queens, New York, to a Roman Catholic father and an Orthodox Jewish mother. After receiving her political science degree from Hunter College in 1948, she found it tough to find a job in her field. She worked as a model, then a buyer for a department store. She was frustrated at her scant chances of work in her area, and she began volunteering at the New York Civil Liberties Union, and in 1965, she joined the staff full-time. Seven years later, lucky for us in LA, she was offered the LA Post. At the time, ACLU SoCal was very different. They had a crew of six working in the offices above a coffee shop and a wig store. She helped transform that. Today, more than 90 staff members operate out of four locations, including downtown LA headquarters, and it's called, of course, the Ramona Ripson Center for Civil Liberties, Civil Liberties and Civil Rights. She was married five times. Her final marriage in 1991 was someone that we all know, Judge Stephen Reinhardt, a famed member of the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. They were both passionate about civil liberties. Quote, "Before we bought a treadmill, we would walk on the beach every morning, holding hands and arguing," she told California Lawyer Magazine in 2002. Reinhardt died earlier this year in March. Ripson is survived by her daughter, Laura Ripson, son William Kaplan, and her son Mark Kaplan died in 1994. May she rest in peace, and may, may the world that's been changed by her continue to move.
Mr. Sadiya?
Mr. President, let me add my voice to that, if I may. Mr. Bloomingfield, you did an excellent job. Let me add a few personal notes. Mr. President, you would have, and I know you knew her and I know you loved her, probably one of the things you, what struck me first was how fashionable she was. I saw her and met, didn't meet her, but I first saw her, I knew of her already. I was a young law student at People's College of Law, but I worked at Bullock's Woolshire selling shirts and ties. And so I was on the elevator, and she got on with a couple of her friends for lunch. They had a tea room, and she was just incredible. And, you know, it's no surprise that she was a model. She had those super cool, probably Calvin Klein jeans at the time, with a silk shirt, those steel gray eyes. She was just amazing, a sight to behold, and just a fierce advocate. You know all the details that have been published, but there's a few other things. ACLU played a major role in Proposition 187, working with Peter Shea, working with MALDEF, with the other leading lawyers to help us after that thumping that we took in 1994. I remember working with her, and you probably do as well, on our efforts to raise the sales tax, and she worked with Sherwin Block and Sheriff Block and her. We had press conferences at the county board of supervisors to make sure that we had the resources during the incredible recession in the early nineties. She was not unwilling to take controversial stands, even if that meant working with other people who were considered to be at the extreme opposite of her political point of view. And I remember that press conference and her noting the significance of her being there with Sheriff Block at the time, that it was just an indicator of how significant the issue was. About 10 years ago, we got to spend a few days together in New York, her and Ed Edelman and I, and a handful of leaders from the region, and we went to study homelessness, and she was as sharp as could be. Her and Supervisor Edelman spent a lot of time together, and I hung out with them in the freezing cold, it was about 17 degrees in New York, and she was just extremely, extremely Let me say this to you, that I knew her personally, and I loved her because she was such a fierce champion. She was fearless. She was a gentle giant, and I think she could be intimidating because she was so clear and articulate. Well, she was slender, she was, you know, she was tall and imposing in many ways, but she was really a real gentle human being, and I really enjoyed, when I was first elected to the city council, she took me to lunch, and we had lunch right down the street, a few blocks from here. What a special woman, what an inspiration, someone that I was always in awe of to be in her presence, even though we, I considered her a friend. She was just a really special human being, and her impact in this region will be forever felt. May we, may she rest in peace and in justice.
Well said. Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. This come by, this, this adjourning most is a special request by a brother in service, Commissioner Joel Asinto, Board of Public Works. Like to adjourn in memory of Sharon Cupu Cana y Paulo, who has dedicated her life to the welfare, welfare of this community. Born in Honolulu, she moved to California with her family in 1970, making their home in the Susaglondora Cities of the San Gabriel Valley. She worked for the Department of Cultural Affairs until her retirement in 2012, and with the Department of Cultural Affairs, Sharon worked within the Performing Arts Division and helped to coordinate and support more than 149 annual city-sponsored special events within the diverse communities that make up the cultural fabric that is Los Angeles. She served the last seven years within the department's Board of Cultural Affairs Commissioners, where she served multiple terms as president of the Hawaii's Daughters Guild and the Hawaiian Inter Club Council of Southern California. She also co-founded the Hawaiian Community Center Association and the Pacific Islander Community Council, producers of the annual Pacific Island Festival in the city of Los Angeles for 20 years. And throughout her service in the community, she has served in many community advocacy groups such as the Women of Color, National Democratic Coalition for Asian Pacifics, Pacific American Women's Network, and the U.S. Census Bureau REAC Committee for Native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islanders. Raised six beautiful children and now has 17 grandchildren and 15 great-grandchildren. Our hearts go out to Sharon's family, friends, and colleagues. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna, Mr. Sadiya?
This was a tough weekend, losing Ramona, and then also Saturday morning, Dr. Leo Estrada, Associate Professor of Urban Planning at UCLA. He arrived at UCLA in 1977, just as I was leaving, but I knew of him and his reputation. He was in the planning department. At that time, there were only a handful of Latino professors on campus, and we all looked to them for guidance, political direction, for helping us grow as we would as new graduates of UCLA. He had an extremely high academic standard. If I was still an undergrad at that time, I would have avoided his classes because he was super intense about standards that were independent of whatever your circumstance. It wasn't, you weren't gonna get any credit for being a Chicano going to his class. And he distinguished himself as a, as a planner, and he helped shape the field. And when you think about the history of planning in the city and this nation, he's one of the persons who would be at the forefront in terms of making planning something that's not just thought of in academic circles, but is integrated into real-life experiences. And so you know the role that it plays in Plum and in this city. He was at the forefront of that and played a very major role. Obviously, he provided the demographics and the demographic studies for all the redistricting that has taken place, and he also played a major role. He was on the Christopher Commission because he was considered such a solid academic, such a solid voice. Even though he came off as being nonpartisan, his academic work was always persuasive and led us towards just results. On a personal basis, I, like hundreds and hundreds of his students and proteges, looked to him for guidance at critical moments, and I remember making a decision to run for public office in early or late 1990s, and sought him out, and cannot thank him enough for the hours and hours I spent with him, talking about what this change would mean. All of us have had those moments where we made that decision to become elected officials, public servants. They're not easy choices, at least they were not for me, and he was a guiding force, both in my decision to run, and then a guiding force in how to conduct myself, how to guide my work, how to continue to be of service to the public. He was a real special human being. I loved him very much. Fun guy, enjoyed life, loved his wife, loved his kids, and sadly left us this Saturday morning, maybe close in his honor.
And he and, remember he and Jean Grexby?
Yes.
The, the work that they did together? Yeah, so you, you have me taking a trip down memory lane. Mr. Ru?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just join in that adjourment, I mean, that is a shock. He was a legend and a titan, and, but more importantly, I mean, years ago, he sat down with me, answered any questions I had. I mean, he was such a great mentor and a, and a teacher, where he went out of the time, he made the time to give anyone who was interested in politics advice and lessons. So, I mean, that is a tremendous shock. I mean, that is a shock to Los Angeles, and not just the Latino community, but all communities. Thank you, Mr. Steel, if I could join.
Okay. Now I'm looking to my right side. Any adjournings to my right? Mr. Kratz, Mr. Kukorian, not seeing any members, this meeting is, is adjourned.